To Fresno City Council Special Meeting of Wednesday, May 1st. Want to welcome everyone. I'm glad to see you here and being active in our government and helping us make decisions that benefit our city. With that, I think we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
President.
Council President Capriolio.
Here. All right. Thank you again for being here this afternoon. And we have a resolution initiating a tax amendment to a zoning ordinance for the city of Fresno regarding ABC and off-site consumption. This is sponsored by Vice President Arias, Councilmembers Sparza and Chavez. With that, we can take your initial comments and set the stage for us, if you would, Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. Today in the audience joining us are youth of our city, represented by the Youth Leadership Institute, business owners that are very valued in our community, represented by the Association of American Petroleum and Convenience Stores. This afternoon...
I forgot to make an announcement. The clerk asked me to remind everyone that we have yellow cards and they're located on either side of Brianna here. If you'll take a card and fill it out legibly, that helps you pronounce your name properly and gives us a better record. So, pardon the interruption, but I need to make that announcement. So, please fill these cards out, put them on the ledge right behind her, and then they'll come up to me. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you, President Capriolio. This afternoon, we have the privilege and the great opportunity to introduce to the council the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act that is being sponsored by myself, Councilmember Sparza and Councilmember Chavez, and supported by the youth of our community and the Association of Convenience Store operators in our city as well. This act will finally eliminate Fresno's designation as the drunkest city in America as it tries to achieve a healthier community and finally eliminate the saturation of alcohol licenses in our community that has become detrimental to the quality of life of many of our neighborhoods and become an impediment to attracting full-service grocery stores. The way we're going to try and present this is we'll make some opening presentations, slides to give you some context. Hopefully this works there. As you can see from Slide 1, council colleagues, Fresno has the largest and the highest concentration of liquor licenses in the state of California. The state recommends essentially a 2,500, for every 2,500 residents, one off-site liquor license. In Fresno, we have one license for every thousand. In parts of our city, in South Fresno, we have one license for every 500 residents. It's been a big challenge for us and the quality of neighborhoods that we're trying to achieve. It's also been a huge detriment to the current business owners who cannot compete when the saturation of prices are so low and the saturation of liquor licenses continue at this level. We didn't get here overnight. This has been a long process and decades long to get us to this point. It started in 1993 with the adoption and the grandfathering of many licenses in the city of Fresno. From '93 to 2017, the city essentially approved every liquor license that came before it under the provision of public convenience and under the thinking that any job that was created was a positive for the city without really considering the detrimental effects of saturation of liquor license. In 2011, the city was designated the drunkest city in America. And I want to spend some time walking you through some of the posters that are out there. When we talk about the drunkest city in America, it's not because simply we have a lot of liquor licenses. It's actual health indicators. The amount of mortality and deaths as a result of liver failures connected to alcohol, the amount of deaths as a result of DUI accidents, the amount of DUIs, the severity of DUI fines, all of those are an indication of Fresno becoming designated the drunkest city in America. As a result, the youth began to organize in 2012 to try and advocate for a reduction and a change in policy. A year after, even our small business owners, represented by APCA, began to advocate to say that we cap any new licenses because they too recognize the detrimental effect that it was having in our city. In 2016, the city passed a resolution to reduce the storefront signage. In 2017, the city attempted to try and address this overall situation with the CUP ordinance that failed. In 2017, we started to be sued by small business owners because we continued to approve licenses even though they were in saturated areas and right across the street from existing licenses. In 2018, we got the first lawsuit by residents because the city continued to approve additional licenses in saturated areas. That led us to 2019 where my council colleagues and I asked our city attorney to do a pilot inspection program to assess the current conditions of most of our operators. In short, what you'll see in this slide is that saturation is clear. It's also had a detrimental impact in public safety. In our four districts alone in South Fresno, we had more than 15,000 calls for public safety in those operations. Now, if we can have our youth speak to the next couple of slides.
If you could give us your name and address for the record, all the speakers that come forward today, please do that so we can keep our records official and accurate. Welcome. Love to hear from you.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lily Vane. I am a junior at Sunnyside High School and I am also a Fire and Nightlife Youth Leader. Research has shown that there is a link between underage drinking and the alcohol ads. Every year, the alcohol industry spends $2 billion on advertising. In 2019, FNL Youth Leaders were able to conduct a storefront assessment in front of Sunnyside High School. And we found out that there are about 20 liquor stores within the one-mile radius of the campus. Of those 20 liquor stores, we were able to conduct our storefront assessment on 17 liquor stores. And of those 17 liquor stores, 11 of those stores advertised alcohol and had more than 15% of alcohol ads as permitted. And this is concerning because the city's development code currently states that the advertisements shouldn't go over 15%. 66% of Fresno County youth are seeing at least one or more alcohol ads a day. Studies have shown the more young people are exposed to alcohol marketing, the more likely they are to start drinking. Now, I would like to bring up my fellow peer, Nicole Lee.
My name's Nicole Lee and I'm a sophomore at Roosevelt High School and a Fire and Nightlife Leader. And I would like to start off by acknowledging the partnership with California Fire and Nightlife Partnership and thanking the Southeast Neighborhood Transformation Team, also known as CENT, for all the incredible work they've started since 2012 to address the issue of oversaturation of liquor outlets and advertisements in our community, particularly the Roosevelt Neighborhood. I would like to start off by sharing four important data points that we collected through the Fresno County Student Insight Survey that helped assess the perception and the behavior of Fresno County youth when it comes to underage drinking. We surveyed over 6,400 Fresno County students. The data revealed that 61% of youth surveyed stated that it is easy for them to access alcohol. Easy access is a contributing factor to underage drinking. Secondly, 66% of youth surveyed see at least one alcohol ad per day. These alcohol advertisements are posted on storefronts, billboards, TVs, et cetera, which have a strong influence on youth, which encourages them to try and consume alcohol. As they are exposed to these ads, they're more likely to drink alcohol. We want to reduce the numbers of alcohol ads so youth won't be so negatively influenced. So, how are youth accessing alcohol? One way is that youth are getting alcohol. According to the data, 28% of Fresno County youth reported they receive alcohol from an adult stranger, also known as shoulder tapping, when a youth gives an adult stranger to buy alcohol for them. And secondly, 14% of youth reported buying it themselves. This can be due to not showing an ID, which is, as a result, increases the number of underage drinking. So, we're so thankful today that this could be a sustainable solution that is possible for our youth, neighborhoods, and our communities with the leadership and support of our council members. Thank you.
Now, city clerk, if you can play the short video that the youth have prepared for this presentation.
The youth's first response immediately following the shootings was actually to get out into the neighborhood. We really wanted to see the injustices and the issues and the hurt firsthand for ourselves.
We trained young people through the partnership with Wild-Li to say, "Young people, we need to be able to collect youth-led action research that shows why we need to make change in this community, that shows that the amount of negative advertising is unbelievable, that shows that the amount of liquor stores in our neighborhood is astronomical."
Did some door knocking, got to know our neighbors and their opinions. We asked them, "What issues do they want to see fixed? What hurt are they seeing? What injustices are they seeing?" And many of them agreed with us that there were not access, there was not access to these healthy outlets.
Especially at Roosevelt High School, where I go, there are 40 liquor stores in a one-mile radius, and they are all plastered with advertisement everywhere.
Done things like, take a look at marketing that's been done by the alcohol companies and targeting our youth. And we've also done things like asset mapping. So, any way that we have been able to improve our community, I'd like to be a part of that.
They had to go and connect with the corner store owners to say, "We want to create a relationship with you. You have this store in our community, and we would love for you to be more community-friendly. Can you pledge not to sell alcohol to minors? Can you pledge to be more family-friendly place and not place your alcohol by any types of products that attract children?" And most of the store owners said yes.
So, the billboard work is a positive advertisement to help fight, get out the negative advertising that's going around with the liquor stores.
So, we used hashtag #MySilverSwag on the billboard. And then we also had a picture of, like, graduates and then, like, people from, like, well, just in capping gowns. And then, like, cooks or, like, football players. And it was really awesome because it was like, it was saying that if you, like, keep on going without drinking or making a bad decision, like, you're going to get there.
I believe in CENT because I believe in the power of the youth voice. I believe that our youth have unique perspectives that are really important for our city officials to hear and care about.
We need to be listening to the youth. We need to make sure that as the youth are telling us and engaging us, that we are incorporating their ideas into our decision-making models. So, it's a relationship that elected should have with the youth. Any movement that ever had any significance in our country, it was always led by the youth.
This truly is a community-based model. This work can't be done alone by the young people. It can't be done alone by adults. It's youth and adults working together.
As a teacher in Fresno Unified School District, I think it's very important to be part of our communities and help improve them.
As a Fresno Pacific University student, I saw how crucial it was for me to be involved in the work of CENT. It is important for me and for others to recognize this social injustice.
Colleagues and public, in summary, our goal is simply to improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods while supporting our existing small businesses. This proposal would cap new licenses, achieve reduction in saturated areas over time, expand the alcohol-free zones around our schools, parks, and other sensitive areas, incentivize full-service grocery stores in our food deserts, establish a joint accountability commission with our small business owners, and ultimately lead to revocation of individuals who refuse to operate their businesses in a responsible way. To be clear, for existing businesses, it would be no change to their current operations as long as they follow current state and city regulations. They would not be required to undertake a new CUP, and they would be participating in a business education program that we'll be launching in partnership with APCA. And they would be participating in a city inspection program that we would be developing with APCA as well. For new businesses, it would cap new licenses. It would require new licensed applicants to purchase an existing license in a saturated area and retire it. It would further reduce window signage for alcohol and tobacco advertisement to 5% of their window. It would expand the buffers between our sensitive areas from 500 feet currently to 1,000 feet near our schools, parks, and sensitive areas. And of course, they would also be participating in the city inspection program and ultimately also be susceptible to revocation if they were to become irresponsible operators. Before I bring up our partners in this work, APCA, I wanted just to briefly inform the council that we undertook a pilot study where we went and visited essentially half of the license holders. And we confirmed that 96% of them would not be in good standing if we were just to simply enforce an inspection program without their collaboration. We also confirmed that we had 15,000 calls for public safety services in the current operations. So, we've been working with APCA for a while now to develop a proactive outreach and education program, which they can speak to, a progressive fine structure that would be part of the master fee schedule, a joint accountability commission that they and my colleagues can speak to. It would also have alignment of the California ABC office, and it would ultimately be run and executed under our city attorney's office. In closing, next steps, to be clear, today's item would initiate the formal process of changing the Fresno Municipal Code. It would, takes us six to eight months to complete the environmental review and assessments. We would then begin working with the business partners to develop the proactive business education program and the city inspection program. When the documents and the studies would be complete, they would then go to the council implementation committees for feedback, to the airport commission for public hearing, to the planning commission for public hearing, and ultimately to the city council, which we estimate would be sometime in early 2020, for final discussion and adoption. With that, I'd like to invite the representatives from the association, APCA, to come to the council and also share some words as they've been working with this, with us through this process. And I will tell you, Andy, if you can come forward. We've had very long, drawn-out conversations, thoughtful conversations. I have been impressed, like my colleagues have, with your willingness to be part of the solution. We recognize that 95% of the businesses are good operators. We need to focus on the ones that haven't been and that we need a permanent solution so we don't continue the saturation of licenses in our city. So, Andy, you have the floor.
Yes. Hello, Council President and rest of the councils. Thank you for having us here. I wanted to mention that we have been working with the city for probably about 14 years. Last eight years, we've been very strongly asking city to implement some of the oversaturation issue. We do agree with Councilmember Arias, some of these issues, especially two of those one are very critical. What is the oversaturation issue going on in certain district? Second is the signage issue. And we have been advocating this, these two problems for a while, and we are in support of leveling that so that way our kids and our new generations are not getting into alcohol and giving wrong messages. We also are concerned when, first time, when we came to the city council, we are the one came to the city and mentioned that we were the drunkest city. City council people did not even know. We wanted to do a good deed. Our kids are born here, they go to school here. We want them to come back to our community and be part of this community. So, in good effort, we were coming down to the city to ask that they take strong measures. There were existing laws, which is conditional use permit. We were asking them to follow those conditional use permit. We were supporting heavy fine to anybody who was violator. Unfortunately, the city didn't have the money. Budget crisis was going on. We went back and we asked our members, "Can we come up with some money and give it to the city so they could hire the code enforcement?" The money was, also came back and offered to the city. City came back and two, three months later, they said that they cannot accept the money because it would be illegal for, from them. But, so, my reason of here is, you know, anytime there's a crime going on in the entire city of Fresno, here the city, somehow the media, or some city council propaganda this theory that anytime there's a crime comes up in the city is because of a gas station or a liquor store is there. That is not the fact. We, as a business owners, are, massive majority of them are good, good business owners. We're trying to do good things. But when there are people across the street are having 40 signs, 30 signs, it's very hard for the competition to not have any signs. So, those laws, which one was in the book, the city didn't follow. And because of that, when there's a chain reaction happen, when, on the street, when there's not a police officer, everybody's racing for several years, means that nobody's going to stop unless that police officer is seen down there. I wanted to recognize a couple of other things, that we are organization of small businesses and a lot of good people are in here with good heart. We like to work with the city to address some of these issues and wherever. Originally, our issue was when, was 50% of liquor license was going to get shut down. We worked with the city council. We appreciate their effort to change those wordings around. We are in favor of finding people who are violating, who have excessive and illegal signs in the city. We do, do support that one. And one thing for sure, during the negotiation, we have last two weeks very strongly worked with the city council, Chavez and Arias. And we want to make sure that there's no other layer of other bureaucracy, any other layer of more laws coming into, which is going to cost us into some sort of inspection or anything. So, we are assured that there won't be anything else coming up, but they're going to make sure that they enforce some of these one, some of the modification of conditional use permit, which are existingly in there. So, we were also granted that and...
Can I just interrupt? I'm just a point of question. Andy, you're saying you were assured what, you said no inspections?
I think what he's referencing is that where this proposal doesn't add any additional regulations to any current operator, and it doesn't add any additional regulations for them. It's about inspecting and getting compliance with the existing ones.
So, what I was trying to say, council member, that rather than adding more layers and other, there was, there were proposals to have additional ABC conditional use permit, having two conditional use permit. So, we were working together rather than having another layer on top of another and have more fees there. We were asking that we would support making sure that there's no additional fees going on to the small business owner.
Okay. I'm not sure, have you been assured that there will be no fees as part of the city of Fresno inspection, this inspection? Because it's in your resolution about an inspection.
Yeah. The proposal doesn't include any fees for the inspection. I think what Andy's referencing to is an original draft of the proposal proposed to require folks to apply for two separate CUPs if they were existing businesses. One for the operation of the business and one for the operation of the liquor license. That CUP condition has been removed as is referenced in this slide here. So, there will be no existing CU, new CUP requirement for existing businesses.
But when they're inspected, and I'm just asking you of your resolution, when they're inspected, because it says an inspection and we'll get into that, will there be a fee to the business for the inspection?
No. There's no proposal to charge the businesses to be inspected.
Could that change?
I guess it could change if a future council decides to charge for it, but the proposal as written does not have any inspection fee.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's, that's the reason we agreed. We are small business owners. We are heavily regulated. Everybody comes up with the idea, and we are the only one don't have a voice. Finally, in this APCA associations throughout the California, we started asking and educating our members and educating our city officials to mirror together in the issues, what's going on on both sides. But lastly, I want to mention that we are small business people. We are not politician. We know what the issues are. We are willing to work with the city. You council members are politicians. You know how your work is. We are not expert in your work. However, we want to agree, we want to fix that oversaturation and signage issue. Just make sure, please, whatever language comes up in there, that the small business are not burdened with extra fees and other regulation, another layer of business license or whatever that is. If it's not, then I'd like to support this thing.
Great. Thank you, Andy. And now, I'd like to turn the floor over to my council colleagues, Councilmember Chavez and then Sparza.
Thank you. And I was going to chime in, but I wanted to let Andy do his presentation. So, part of the conversation we're having here today, and city attorney, just to clarify for the record, so today, we're actually going to initiate the process, which will take approximately how long?
Six to eight months.
So, six to eight months. One of the, I think, biggest assets that came out of this conversation was the fact that we are establishing a formal committee that's comprised of the business folks and the community folks, who will have that conversation and work through not just this policy, but we know that from the conversations we've had, both sides have wanted to be working partners in addressing this. Because one of the other pieces that we did not touch that I think we'll bring up during the conversations is also tobacco products and then the vaping equipment and things of that sort. And so, I think that's really the value of what we're discussing here today, that this will be an ongoing partnership between our community, between the youth, the churches, the other groups that we reached out to, and then our business community. And so, we're in this situation now where we're initiating this. I think this is the beginning of a policy that will gradually, over time, reverse a mistake that the city of Fresno is 100% responsible for. We did not create this situation overnight, and we're not going to fix it overnight. We know that this is the beginning of that process. And one of the big pluses that I saw in this policy is the fact that in order to open up another or a liquor store, you have to trade in either two or three, depending on the square footage, based on areas that are saturated, which we know, based on the maps, are in districts seven, five, three, in some parts of one. So, part of that work is still going to be had, the conversations, and I think I'm looking forward to working with, with you folks and with our youth. And I really want to thank our kids because they really did a great job in not just bringing forward a problem, but more importantly, a solution. And this is something that oftentimes we hear from different stakeholders, who are both saying the same thing, but it was that gap of communication that I think, you know, maybe we should have done a little better job of earlier in the process. But we're here, happy to support this. Again, this will be the beginning of that conversation for our folks. And I do also want to thank our APCA. I said this publicly, that I think oftentimes the perception is that because they see the AMPM or the 7-Eleven, they think that it's a corporation, but it's not a corporation. It's a locally-owned, small mom-and-pop shop. And I know because out canvassing in my neighborhoods, I knocked on a lot of doors and I actually spoke to folks that own small businesses that have poured their life savings into this. And so, I wanted to publicly thank you for the work that, that you've been doing for a number of years. And, you know, let's, let's get this going and make sure we come up with a policy that helps our city, which is what we all want. Thank you.
Committee Member Sparza?
Thank you. You know, we've come a really long way in this legislation that we're proposing here today. I think pre-me being on the council, you know, I had a very solid idea of the saturation just based on my anecdotal experience, walking through all the neighborhoods in my district. But, you know, once I got on the council, we had solid access to the data and these nice maps that we have here. And I know I was floored to find out that I had the highest saturation of off-site licenses of any district in the entire city by far, with Councilmember Arias as a close second, and I think the third place, Councilmember Chavez. So, you know, where the legislation started, I want to say that there was an eagerness to really dig deep into this issue and find success where there was previously, you know, failure. And I think, you know, where we started in terms of wanting to kind of more aggressively pursue some of the existing holders, we've now come together and gone through the distance with each other, with APCA, and I'm very grateful for that. These are small business owners. They have, they raise their families here. They're members of our community, they're our neighbors. So, it was great to work with them, great to find that we have a lot of common grounds in wanting to correct some of the wrongdoing in history that has been done in our, here in our community by the city of Fresno. our, here in our community by the city of Fresno. On the other side, we had our, our youth who have actually done the hard footwork over the years. And I think a lot of this and a lot of these ideas would not have been possible without, without those years of hard work and dedication to this issue. So I think, I think both sides, I kind of see you sitting here, and I'm glad to see us here as one today. You know, we've been in the room with the youth, we've been in the room with our small business owners. So it's accumulated into this, you know, symbolic, you know, unification here of us all here today in support of this legislation. You know, it, it won't change things directly overnight in terms of the number of offsite licenses, but over time, as new development pop up, you know, they're, they will gradually reduce. And I'm, I'm very much in favor of the provisions where we are asking these new operators who come in to take from the most saturated areas. And that means they'll be taking likely from district seven first, if not district three and district five. And so over time, we're going to see that reduction that our community so desperately needs. I won't take too much time. I think, you know, what's said is, what's needed to be said has been said. We've come this whole distance together. I appreciate the hard work from folks on both sides.
Thank you. Next, we're going to, now that we've had the introduction, we will go to the public. And if you haven't filled out a yellow card, please do so. There's still plenty of opportunity to speak. If you just bring them up here and set them by our clerk, that'd be fantastic. We're going to try to go two minutes per speaker, and you can tell us if you favor or oppose the matter pending before you this afternoon. With that in mind, then we'll come back to the council, and then my colleagues can make their comments, and then hopefully we'll get to a relatively quick vote. So with that, we can start with Christina Garcia from YLI. And then we'll go to Bob Beru La, and then Leila. And we'll close with Kyle. So Christina, it's your opportunity. Please give us your name and your address, and then you'll have two minutes to voice your opinion.
Okay. My name is Christina Garcia, and my address is five six one South Sierra Vista Avenue.
Thank you.
So good afternoon, everyone. My name is Christina Garcia. I am a sophomore at Roosevelt High School and a youth leader for the Friday Night Live chapter there. As a youth on behalf of Friday Night Live at Edison, at Sunnyside, and at Roosevelt High School, Friday Night Live California Youth Council, California Friday Night Live Partnership, Fresno Youth Commission, Youth Leadership Institute, Fresno State Student Interns, the No Youth Media, and the Fresno Boys and Men of Color, we support the portion of the ordinance that doesn't have liquor outlets in the amount of one thousand feet of high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. But overall, we support the whole ordinance in general, for this would create a safe and healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, you're next, and then we'll go to Leila and Kyle. Good afternoon. Good to have you here today.
Mr. President and council members, my name is Bob Bahrla. I own Elite Liquors at five one nine one East Belmont, Peachland Belmont. And I have another one in North Fresno. While I was walking, there are three stores have posters, but none mine. I've been in business for thirty-four years, zero violation alcohol or tobacco. I'm a responsible person. I have three daughters who are graduating from college doing masters. And when I'm looking at this ordinance, yes, it is time to clean up the city. In the last thirty-four years, I've seen so many people that come, like says, one bad apple spoiled the whole basket. Yes, there are some bad apples. I've been involved with the city. In nineteen ninety-two, I was on the committee as a CUP. When person comes, has a violation, they come to us, and we give suggestions. Yes, we did improve somewhat, but then got a lack of time, lack of funds, lack of code enforcement. If the code enforcement was still working, I think we would have still a better city. In two thousand, we were the city, the whole America, a clean city, and then it's going Clients are between this store and the other store are totally different. On North Side Fresno, they're educated people, they have other ways to entertain themselves. And here in this neighborhood, there's no movie theater, no mall, no fine restaurant. Kings Canyon Clovis is considered as a major artery, just like Blackstone and Shaw. What's around in Kings Canyon Clovis? There's no, a brand name gas station. They're converting to lower because supply and demand. On these other people, they don't have other sort of entertainment. They have either backyard barbecue, swimming party, watching game, and what happens? Barbecue, they need alcohol. We are not the only one who is supporting them. I was standing at Rite Aid for a membership, and they had beer on sale for nineteen ninety-nine. The cost is nineteen sixty-eight. They're making only thirty-one cents. The person has two twelve-pack those.
Bob, can you wrap it up? Bob, can you? Your time is up, but finish your thought.
Yes. So I was at Rite Aid, and a person has two twenty-pack of cases. The cost of each is nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-eight, and they're selling for nineteen ninety-nine, making only thirty-one cents. So people are, we are not the only one contributing. The alcohol sales is also the big stores. So I would like to, I see that it's a good initiative. I support it. I like to it. But please don't hurt myself, like my other people. Andy, he's my neighbor. We all good, responsible retailers. As long this ordinance doesn't hurt me or Andy or responsible, all responsible retailers.
Right.
Let's work together, come with a solution, how we can.
Thank you very much, and thanks for being a responsible owner. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Bob. Next will be Leila, I believe. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members. My name is Leila Galamrezaiya. That's okay. And I live at sixty-six ninety-seven North Meridian in Fresno. My zip code is nine three seven one zero. And I actually am a health educator with the Fresno County Department of Public Health. The health department is concerned about the density of tobacco retailers and the prevalence of tobacco and alcohol advertising, not only in the city of Fresno, but in the entire county of Fresno. Research studies from Stanford, Brigham Young, and Harvard document that children are more likely to smoke when they live or go to school in neighborhoods where there's a high density of tobacco retailers. And my background is in tobacco control, and oftentimes tobacco and alcohol go hand in hand. So I'm going to be talking more from a tobacco perspective, but the licenses often go hand in hand as well. A research study from John Hopkins found that tobacco advertising at the point of sale provides an environmental cue that prompts individuals to buy the product even when they weren't originally planning to. And furthermore, according to a study from the University of Houston, when adult smokers who are trying to quit live within short walking distance of a tobacco retailer, excuse me, they are less likely to be successful at quitting tobacco use. Reducing the advertising, marketing, and availability of these products is a proven upstream policy change that will help reduce the use of these products, especially for youth. The younger people are, when they initiate alcohol and tobacco use, the more likely they are to be addicted, and the less likely they're going to be able to quit when they're older. We have a chance to prevent and lessen the ability to addict new generations and help people quit from tobacco and alcohol use. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila, very much. Next is Kyle, followed by Ajit, and then Janet. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. Kyle Lopez Schmidt, thirty thirty-five North Ferris Avenue in Sorias District, and I work downtown in Arias District. Wanted to highlight a few things. Number one, really excited at the centering of youth voices here. The youth are definitely our future and should be looking to them for leadership. Them calling out this issue for, for several years highlights its importance, and that youth are still engaged in it is really an important thing, so I commend that. Coming on the heels of a project in, in the neighborhood I grew up in, little over a year ago, the Johnny Quickget Belmont and Van Ness, the tenth liquor store in the census tract that should only have six. It was a very frustrating process to have the community entirely aligned in opposition to that project. The Lowell Neighborhood, the Tower District Neighborhood, having police have a letter against it, having the planning commission vote against it, and then it comes to this council, and it's voted in favor, with only one opposed, Clint Olivier, who's not, no longer on the council. So I, I appreciate the council's now coming to the point of taking accountability for those past actions. I think that's very important, and I commend that. Shows leadership to, to show that you've done some wrong to our city and accepting that we're going to change behavior moving forward. So thank you for that. The other thing I want to highlight for any council member that gets businesses that ask them, as well as some of the businesses here, the work that I do with the Northern California Community Loan Fund, we have a program called California Fresh Works that provides grants for technical assistance as well as low, low-cost loan products to help increase access to fresh food in low-access neighborhoods. So if a liquor store, corner store wanted to start offering fresh produce, even kind of fresh, healthy menu items in their stores, we can be of assistance in getting the resources to them. So want to look at these resources throughout the community and, and work together on improving our community health. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Ajit, you're up. A-J-I-T. Sorry if I mispronounced that. Please give us your name and address, and you'll have two minutes, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ajit Gil. Now I live at five thirty West Floral Avenue, Fresno. But eighteen years, I live over there, twenty-two, twenty-eight South Finery, which is close to Chestnut and Butler. When I came here in nineteen seventy-seven, I have three bachelor degrees, project chemistry and math. I got into the gas station business in nineteen eighty-seven, and I bought the existing gas station, one on like on Belmont and Cedar, which was, we don't make anything new, is already existing, we just took over their stores. I have three kids, two daughters, one son, both all went to Roosevelt School, then they graduate from Fresno State. So I'm a part of this community. All these, these are my family. We are from them. We are not different. We are from, we want to work together. When we have too many stores, it hurt us too. It wrote down our profit and created a problem. Nobody wanted too many stores. Why it happened too many stores is a policy of the city, okay? But we can take care of this one, not overnight, but with the time, okay? We don't want to hurt anybody. We don't want to put unnecessary burden. I'm also building one new gas station. You know, it takes a whole life to make one gas station. If you have your dreams to make it, to be independent, creating all kind of income, I'm a, this time, I'm a farmer, I'm a developer, I'm an investor, I got a lot of houses, because I have ambition to do something, okay? Instead of, I have a gas station, I have a, I sell cigarette and I sell liquor, but my inside, I never drinks liquor, never smoke a cigarette, and I never promote anything. So we need to create that kind of awareness in the family, so if there's no demand, there's no stores. Plus, another thing, all the big company stores, they come, they have a different approach. They get the station, they get the permits. When we have a, the police department and other, we get reports from everywhere, why they give them more permissions? There should not be, should not be. I own this one seventy-four. If I suffer the same way, because the new stores came in and hurt me, I spent all my life, I'm retired, ready to retire, it's not fair. Let's be controlled as our APCA, and we work together, how we can reduce this one, and we don't want to be against each other. We want to work together with it. This is our family, we are one, we are not a two. We not want to be against each other. So if anything I can do, I participate in everything, in, in elections, council members, and everything. We don't need to against each other, we need to work together. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much, sir. Next is Janet Salcedo, followed by Sukbir, S-U-K-B-H-B-I-R, from APCA. Good afternoon. Good to see you.
Hi. My name is Janet Salcedo, and I am a former Southeast Neighborhood Transformation Team member. And I am very passionate about creating a safe and healthy community. Back in twenty-twelve, I, along with my peers, youth and young adults from the FNL chapter, led the groundwork and research on tobacco and alcohol outlet saturation, as well as storefront advertisement saturation. Because we saw the negative impacts that it had in our, in the Roosevelt neighborhood, as well as the other Fresno neighborhoods. In twenty-fifteen, we met with the Fresno City Council, the Fresno City Council, many of you may recall, and we were heard partially. We were grateful to see a resolution passed in December of twenty fifteen, which limited storefront signage to fifteen percent. But that was not enough, which is why I am here today. I am here today to urge you to pass this ordinance, which places additional restrictions and accountability that will increase our city's public health and public safety. I also ask that you not only pass this ordinance, but also allocate enough funding to the Code Enforcement Division so that this policy is enforced throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, sir. Sorry about that name.
Here.
I just call you sir when I see you.
So good afternoon, everybody. I really applaud that everybody's here for good cause. I totally agree with oversaturation, and I agree with less signage. But if we don't enforce laws, we can make as many laws, they are not going to work. I know there are new councilmen's here, and they want to work harder, but we have been here three, four years, three years in line, and we have requested that there should be less sign in stores. We got the answer from the manager from there, at that time, there's no funding to enforce. And one thing I want to share, a little story with you guys, I do not agree at all. I respect the youth club, I respect everybody here, but I do not agree with the city lady who was here. I respect her, but I'm going to share a story of my son. I'm in this business from two thousand. My kids, my extended family kids, probably eight of them from their kindergarten up to their high school, they spent all their time in our liquor stores. We, with the family, owned probably like ten of them. So my son, he went to Maple Creek, then to, you know, Granite Ridge, then Clovis North when he graduated, though he stayed in the liquor, and with the cigarettes, and with the signage. When he passed from high school, his GPA was four point seven six. He was selected to every university he applied. He's at Berkeley, he speaks six languages, and he's going to be, you know, his ambition to be a doctor. What I'm trying to say is, here, I see all these store owners, and I can talk about Curran, he's son of Andy, he's going to go into the law school. His whole childhood was in the liquor store. My kids, they crawled in the liquor store. They were there when they were children, they were there when they were teenagers, and when they were youth, they were there. But it's all the mindset which we have to give all the kids, all the communities with education, to tell them that this thing is not good for you. Probably when you're twenty-one, when you can, then you can make your own decision. So I, in the end, I would say two things. If we make any laws, please have some funds. We should all request them. I know you are saying, please have some funds to enforce them. Otherwise, these laws are lameless, they are not going to do no good. And the other thing is, yes, if there's a signage, you know, we should cut it to five percent, ten percent, whatever you guys make the rule, but we should enforce it, but we should make our mindset. but we should enforce it. But, we should make our mindset, you know, we should have that will not to do it. And every kid can have a success story. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your children, my friend. Next is Antonio and then Kern. Antonio Jareki, good to see you. Please give us your name and address.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Antonio Jareki. I'm at 240 West Lorena Avenue in District Three. But, today I'm speaking on behalf of the Fresno Youth Commission. I'm the chairman of the Fresno Youth Commission. I'm also the commissioner for the office of the mayor. And as a youth commission, we're charged with the responsibility of advising the Fresno City Council on the issues that young people face here in our city. We heard about this ordinance, this proposal, through the young leaders of the Youth Leadership Institute and through the Friday Night Live chapter. The Fresno Youth Commission has voted, as a commission, and has supported and does support the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act. We're living in a hurricane of messages and of advertisements and I believe that the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act will remedy the oversaturation of licenses, accessibility to young people, and will encourage alcohol retailers to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have another minute if you'd like. Thank you, Antonio. Appreciate it. Next is Kern. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Hello. My name is Kern Chikara and the address of my father's business is 5210 East Teleria Avenue in Fresno, California. My father purchased and took over that business as his first business the same month and year that I was born. So, as to echo earlier, I was raised around this business. And raising a child, I could see had an effect on my father when it came to the signage and how he conducted his business. Over time, he started to withdraw more and more on the advertisements of alcohol and cigarettes as I grew up and started to become more influenced by my community. At the age of 25, I currently do not smoke, I don't drink, I'm college educated, and I look forward to going to law school and giving back to my community. So, my purpose here is to show the human aspect of the businesses that are conducted in Fresno. And you can see by the numbers of showing out we have here that the people that operate these businesses operate in good faith. You know, the ones that are the bad apples, we are all here to mutually agree that need to be fixed. We are here in encouragement to see that the city is working closely with the community, not just the business side, but also the youth group. And we encourage further communication between the two parties to make sure that we find a agreeable approach to resolve this issue. You know, we don't want to make anyone the enemy that is not supposed to be. And we encourage further communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to say really quick to you and to the other younger folks and the elders who were, spent half a day with us on Friday. You know, this work isn't done in isolation and we spent half a day behind closed doors in a hot room with nothing but donuts and water to get us through until we went line by line in this forty-page ordinance or proposal to make sure that everybody was clear, that we were on the same page and that we had the same goals. So, thank you for not only representing your community and your parents, but also for making sure that you have the same goal that the kids to your left get exactly what you got from this community. So, thank you and I look forward to the decades of you guys leading in Fresno.
All right, folks. That's the last card that I have. So, now what we do is we open it up to general communication. So, anyone that hasn't given a card, yet you'd like to speak on this issue, you can come forward now and give us your name and address and you'll have two minutes. So, come forward, sir. Anyone else, please be ready to come forward and give us your opinions. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, president. My name is Bolwinder Singh. I'm currently not a resident of Madera, but I once was, I mean Fresno. I'm a current resident of Madera. My dad used to own a store on Kings Canyon. So, I can understand like the difficulties that the youth groups have. Us, I joined APCA for the reason that I wanted to give back to my community. And so, the reason why I'm here today to discuss this issue is the fact that us as local business owners and local youth groups of this community all have one goal. Everybody's one goal is to make sure this is a clean environment for everybody to live. And I believe that the council has done a well job to kind of bring this issue forward, not necessarily just the youth group or our businesses, but the fact is that we all work together and make a strive for this. I work really closely with youth groups in Madera as well as in Fresno as well. I coach wrestling, so I see a lot of my young athletes and students that are around these saturated areas and they see these problems every day. So, I believe that in hand in hand and us working together and not pointing fingers and making sure that the issues at hand are resolved in a timely manner, in a well, let's say, brief manner, in a sense that we all work together and understand that our goals are all the same. So, just like Andy has discussed, just like Karen has discussed and the youth have discussed, we all are here for the same reason and that's to beautify our communities and make sure that everybody has a place to live and be prosperous and have those aspects to enjoy. You know what I mean? Oversaturation aren't just because of us local business owners, but another aspect that I wanted to discuss was, we should allow for our businesses to run properly, but these distributors that cause these issues for our young, our businesses have done this for too long. So, I believe another aspect that the council should look at is putting stricter rules on distributors as far as signage is concerned. Because they oversaturate these areas with this signage without permission from local business owners most of the time. They just put them up wherever they feel. So, as a council, I hope that you guys understand that not only just the small businesses are concerned here, but the oversaturation of distributors that are allowed to put these signages out that create this issue from the start, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? This is the opportunity to address the council. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Yes, do we have a motion?
Second.
Did somebody make it?
You made the motion? Okay, we have a motion by member Arias. We have a second by member Sparza. And now, we will go to the council. And first up on my screen here is member Brettafield.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, council, for having this meeting today. I appreciate that, that you did that for my schedule. I know that the council members who brought this forward have dealt with this kind of issue in their districts and it's been a longstanding one. So, I appreciate where people come from in terms of trying to address a saturation of convenience stores. I do want to say a couple of things as we move forward on this. Number one, I want to be fair to the convenience store owners. When this whole notion of drunkest cities has been brought up, it was brought up by Men's Health Magazine. And they determined that we were the drunkest city, not because of you guys, but it sounds like that's the way it's being portrayed. It was because of the arrests for DUI. It was for binge drinking. It was the prevalence, as councilman Arias mentioned, liver disease and severity of DUI penalties. One thing that wasn't included in that was the number of convenience stores where people buy alcohol or where they're concentrated in the city. So, when we talk about drunkest city and somehow we're bringing you into that discussion, that's unfair. Because you have nothing to do with that label. And so, I want people to understand that. I think in some sense, your businesses are being unfairly maligned. I think you've come up and eloquently expressed that you're business people, trying to make a living, raising kids, raising families, and participating in the economy here. And I think that's very true. And Sukbir said very clearly, you've had kids all around your stores and alcohol. They're not drunks. They're not drug addicts. I mean, it always comes down to parenting. Those of us who have children are responsible for raising our children properly. It is in convenience stores that are turning people who become alcoholics into alcoholics. It's choices that people make. Having said that, is there a problem with a saturation of these convenience stores? Yeah, there is. I mean, I don't think anybody can dispute that. You've acknowledged that. And all you have to do is do an analysis. There's 300 south of Shaw, there's 138 north of Shaw. There's a disparity. And when they talk about having one per every 1,250 residents, there's a clear disparity. And I think this resolution, in parts of it, actually addresses it well in terms of new ones that come online, buying out existing ones. It doesn't hurt existing businesses where I think the original versions clearly were problematic. And so, I understand and I think some of these aspects of this resolution will address that there being too many, a large concentration. You know, there's a pastor who's quoted in the Fresno Bee article who has a church over at Millbrook and Shields who says, it isn't the convenience stores per se that are causing these problems. There's other factors. There's payday and title loan businesses that are pervasive. Obviously, street drugs are available. Crime is a problem. I think weakening of the criminal laws through Prop 47 and 57, AB 109 are causing problems throughout many communities. I mean, there are problems with poverty and unemployment and creating jobs. These are a big part of it. There's underage sales. I mean, that's a pervasive problem as well. Jerry Dyer is quoted as saying undercover operations have shown that licensees, some, continue to sell to minors. And adults occasionally purchase alcohol beverages for minors in violation of the law. That's clearly a problem. There's public intoxication. That's a problem. Are we enforcing our laws? Are people being arrested for being publicly intoxicated? That's a question. It always comes down to enforcement. And we're not enforcing our laws. There's no question. This is a big problem. It was alluded to. We can create more laws. We can move 15% signage to 5%. We can move it to .02%. If we're not going to enforce our laws, it doesn't matter what the percentage is. Now, the council members, I think in 135 and seven, asked our city attorney to go out and assess in the districts about violations. I think that was a very good decision, very good move to do that. Because it highlights the problem. And the city attorney's office found that there were 930 total violations at 204 businesses. That's huge. And that was in a week and a half. Is that correct? Yes. So, a week and a half. The five violations observed most frequently were tall cans for sale. There was 195 violations. Small liquor bottles, 112 violations. Missing open container signs, 106 violations. Missing legal age signs, 100 violations. Advertising covering more than 15% of the windows, 99 violations. City manager, what are the fines for those things? What are the general fines? I'm sorry, city attorney, I'm looking at you. You've been promoted now, Doug. Sorry. City attorney.
Yes. Our fines that are set forth in master fee schedule apply where there's not otherwise a specific fine. And for general types of penalties, it would be $250 for the first offense, 500 for the second offense, and 1,000 for the third offense. If it were a health and safety issue, it would be 800, 1,200, and 1,600 dollars.
Okay. So, that sounds fairly significant to me. Now, Jennifer, could you come up, please, So, in a week and a half, the city attorney's office came up with over 900 violations, 204 businesses. It sounds like people are ignoring the laws that we have on the books. What has code enforcement been doing? I've heard that it said, we don't have money for code enforcement. Are you enforcing the laws we have on the books regarding the signage issues, alcohol issues, or are you not?
So, as you know, code enforcement is a reactive arm of the city. So, when we receive a complaint, we go out and we investigate. And if that particular violation is found, there is a period of time in which the property owner has to correct the violation. If they don't correct the violation, then we issue citations.
Okay. But, when you say you're reactive, so in the last month, how many convenience stores have you cited?
I would have to go look at the data in terms of whether or not we have, whether or not we have received complaints and done inspections.
So, complaints from who? Who do you have to get a complaint from?
Anyone can file a complaint. So, Fresno is a great place to file a complaint and to ask us to go out and to evaluate a code enforcement violation.
Okay. But, the reality is, all you have to do is drive along and see the stores. And you see the pictures in here. You need somebody to call you to tell you they're out of compliance or you don't do anything. You ignore it unless somebody calls you. Is that what you're saying?
We currently do not have a proactive program for this type of violation.
Okay. So, you're not enforcing it essentially?
We have proactive, excuse me, proactive programs for our, for weed abatement because of fire season. And we have proactive programs for our rental housing program. We do not have a proactive program for other types of violations.
Okay. So, when we reduce the window signage from 15 to 5%, it means nothing essentially because it's only reactive, correct?
It is currently a reactive program, yes.
Right. So, 15 to 5% doesn't mean a whole lot at this point because you don't enforce what we have on the books. Now, you, that's a fact. It seems to be the case. You may need more code enforcement officers if that's the case. I think we ought to address that as a council. But, to pretend that we're enacting more rules and somehow now, we're going to leave, hey, we've reduced it from 15 to 5%, terrific, we're solving the problem, when in reality, we're not, we're not using code enforcement to address the bad actors that everybody says they want to deal with.
So, there is an opportunity for this legislation to look at how it would fund and finance the ability to do proactive inspection. Right now, we have a full docket of reactive complaints. So, to be able to add additional personnel or to be able to do that would require a revenue source to do that.
And, you know, and I'd like to chime in too. Thank you, Jennifer. We had the conversation a few weeks ago about panhandling and the police department's ability to proactively or process those types of complaints and violations. It's the same issue here that we have with DARM and capacity issues. So, it's a matter of priorities.
Well, this is a big priority and the issue is, it should be a priority for everybody. And if we don't have enough code enforcement officers, that's the discussion we ought to be having. We're enacting some rules, some of which I absolutely support. I think the rules of a new person buying existing CUP so we just don't keep adding, it makes perfect sense to me. Adding more regulations, inspection programs where we can enforce things, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And so, I think we ought to be having a real honest discussion that if we're going to be enforcing rules and existing rules, we ought to be addressing the fact, we don't do it now. Why haven't we done it? And how are we going to change that? I don't want to leave here thinking we've enacted a piece of legislation and everybody can say, this is wonderful, we've changed some rules, and not one thing is going to change in terms of getting after the bad actors. With 904 violations in a week and a half, that's outrageous. And it speaks to the fact that we are not doing our job here with code enforcement. Anybody got anything to say to that? I noticed Jennifer's sitting down and anything you want to say about that, city manager?
Yeah. And the only thing I would say is, council member Arias mentioned the meeting that everybody had to work through the reso. I don't know, I wasn't, to my knowledge, our staff wasn't invited into that meeting. And I could be wrong. Am I misspeaking? Were we invited into that room to discuss how best to enforce this?
Member Chavez, I think was on the committee, could answer that?
Council member Brettafield. So, two things. So, one is, part of the conversation that we had with APCA was that they would develop a, kind of a self-inspection program, educational process, where they would go and identify the folks that weren't in compliance. And that would be essentially the first layer of response to this. If you're advocating for maybe in this ordinance, adding direction to add and pay for and allocate for inspector, I don't think that would be a problem. Is that what you would like to do?
No. What I'm advocating for is a real discussion about why we're not enforcing our existing laws. Not only here, but throughout the city in a number of ways. That we have a pervasive problem throughout the city with code enforcement. We've talked about that. We've talked about moving code enforcement. Today, we're talking about convenience stores that easily we acknowledge some of them are really bad actors and aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And to me, it comes down to enforcement.
I think the simple answer is, it wasn't a priority before, it's a priority now.
Okay. But, we still, we still have to decide, how are we going to enforce this? Because in this, we're not hiring any code enforcement officers. And that's a discussion we seriously need to have if we're going to do enforcement.
Member Brettafield, I think your points are taken with great sincerity. And I think this would be a discussion for the budget period rather than today because we have the issue before us today that we need to kind of focus on. I totally, I totally understand your concern, but at budget, that would be the perfect time to prioritize.
In the staff report... In the staff report, when it says investigation, that you came up with 200 liquor stores that were in violation, and it says the sentence, "Demonstrating the CUP in legal violations as well as excessive police calls for service, demonstrating the need for legislative change." I disagree. It demonstrates the need for enforcement. That's why I want to make that point. In the proposed policy change, you talk about an inspection program to ensure compliance with state and local regulations with input from the stakeholders. I guess you're forming a committee to address that.
So councillor Bretfield, first to your question on code enforcement, you're absolutely right. Code enforcement has been a continuing conversation. I'll be happy to bring forward an item with you, so we can just have a discussion on the future of code enforcement for the city. Secondly, yes, what we heard clearly from the business owners was that they too are frustrated that there's no inspection of existing rules and laws. So our plan is to work with them. What I established is doing the environmental review for the next six to eight months, we would be meeting, developing the inspection program together and developing their version also. They're also going to be developing a public awareness program for themselves and their members to make sure that they get their first visit from their members before the city shows up and does inspections. As you can imagine, every single business has a different CUP. Some of them have grandfather CUPs, others have brand-new ones. So the inspection would have to consider all those elements. So we would develop the program together, bring it back to the council for approval after the six, eight-month process, and then whatever fines we agree with would be part of the master fee schedule so that everybody understands what would be the consequences.
Okay. Lastly, on the inspection program, do you have any sense, Doug, from your review of the violations, how many employees you would need, what the cost of this would be, anything related to who will be inspected, the cost to the businesses? I mean, I think you've gotten a commitment that there's not supposed to be a fee associated to you with these inspections. You're going to need to hold the city accountable. I'm not convinced of that, but you'll need to hold the city accountable. Do you have any sense of what, how many employees? Because apparently, it's going to be under your purview.
Well, that's not been thoroughly hashed out yet, but I would think a legal investigator, for example, could inspect several businesses per day and get through several hundred of these every year. So if you had a legal investigator along with a clerical person, legal secretary, that would probably accomplish what you would want to accomplish.
In addition to code enforcement officers, which we'll talk about within the budget. So when it says, though, fiscal impact, and it says no net financial effect is expected, that's not accurate. There will be an impact to the city.
What's accurate is that the current proposal before us simply initiates a process, so there's no financial impact for initiating the process. Of course, if in six months or in the budget process, we determine that we need additional staffing, then that, of course, will be taken up at that time.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember.
I appreciate really the work. I understand, you know, the saturation of these licenses. I think the rest of your ordinance addresses that. I'm just concerned about the inspection, the impact, and frankly, I feel the covert negative message towards businesses who are just doing their job, and in fact, the city of Fresno has not done its job in terms of code enforcement for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is member Soria.
Thank you, council president. I'm going to keep my remarks very short, because I think folks want to get to a vote. But I do want to thank folks for being here, in particular, the young people. Very proud of the work that you guys have done over the last few years, also the adult allies. Thank you for mentoring and, you know, walking hand-in-hand with them. And I also want to thank APCA. I know that they've been working very hard over the last few weeks and have been working and have worked with other council members on other issues related to what we've been discussing today. And so, you know, I thank you for not giving up and staying at the table and having a robust conversation with my council colleagues to make sure that we were able to bring forward today, or that they were able to bring forward today, a resolution that would initiate a process where we're serious about, I think what I heard, cleaning up our city and making sure that we work together in that process. So today, just, you know, again, just to clarify, we're initiating a process where folks will continue to be engaged. So this is kind of the beginning of a longer process where folks, you know, should continue to be engaged about it. And I appreciate my council colleague Bretfield's comment about us having an honest conversation related to code enforcement and the lack of enforcement that has happened over many years because of recession and, you know, not having enough resources. But I think that that's really the fundamental issue that we need to focus on over the next few months, even before coming back with the established program, that we are much more proactive and that we explore initiating that sooner rather than later so that, and I would feel comfortable under the city attorney's purview, just as we've done with Asset, to be able to initiate that, because I know it takes a few months to hire folks, so that we're able to do that proactive enforcement that APCA has been calling for and that our youth also, I know, want to see. So I would support that. Other thing that I would like to just mention is an idea that we are able as public to report code enforcement violations as it relates to liquor stores, so adding that to our Fresno app. So city manager, if that's something that we can explore adding to the list, that way we can start tracking, and that way our folks that are going to be doing the enforcement also can get that information much quicker, given that our residents are eyes and ears. So I don't know if that's something that we can explore adding to.
We can look into that.
Perfect. And so with that, you know, I'm happy to be supportive of initiating the process. I look forward to hearing from folks as we're working through this and see what the end product is. But I think at the end of the day, we got to get serious about enforcing our current laws and then whatever we put forward, because I would hate to create this illusion that things are going to change when we are not then doing the job later after we've created a program. So thank you, everyone, for being here, and a call for the vote. I know that my colleagues have made a motion in a second.
City manager?
Yeah, I just had a question for the city attorney's office based upon some of the stuff that councilmember Bretfield was indicating. The inspections that you did, they were based on looking at each establishment on current law, not the individual entitlement for each individual establishment, correct? So they could have had different allowances for signage or whatever else. Is that correct?
It was looking at state law, local law, and their CUP. We documented the conditions and then went back and compared that to what their CUP was.
Okay, I didn't hear the individual CUP part. Thank you.
All right, the screen is clear, and my comments are brief. I want to first thank everyone for coming out today. Some of you, it was really inconvenient, because the school and the businesses have got to operate every day, all day. So thanks for taking the time to come and to speak to us, and you were all, it was really impressive to have all of you come forward and give us your true ideas. The second thing is problem identification. I tell my children, problem identification, that's easy, very easy, but problem solution is the crux of the case. That's what you really have to address. So with these community leaders, these business leaders coming together, merging, that's the best way to come up with a viable solution that we all can live with. So if I had a hat, I'd take it off and tip it to you, because all of you did such a great job, and appreciate your patience and working together, and we're going to continue to work together. This is initiation, so it's the beginning. So please, keep the open mind, be willing to work together, and reach a solution that we can resolve the problem that we face here in Fresno. So thank you all very much. With that, we will go to an electronic vote, so above me will be the vote on this item. Yes is support, no is to oppose. Passes 7-0. Congratulations to all of you. 6-0, because of all of you, that's why we get that vote. So thank you so much, and we will adjourn the meeting.